Yeah.
Should have two board members.
Okay. Here's Miss Eens. Okay. I have Brendan Stack. And Mayor Hayes is coming on now. Yeah, we're rolling. Cooking with the oil. Jim, I'd actually prefer this be up about two foot so they're not looking up my nostril next to. Kidding, kidding. That is photography 101. That's why you see Patricia. She's what she does is selfie is holding it up, right? That's right. That's right. I'll just lower my seat. Oh, that's funny. Mayor Hayes or Miss Zines can just, if you don't mind confirming you can hear us.
Yes, that's Christie. I can hear you. I'm on the way back from Florida. So sorry if there's some background music here.
It looks like they're muted. I suspect that they're talking because.
Can you hear me?
But we don't hear them.
Can you hear me? Hey, Hayes? Hello? Hello?
I can hear you, Mayor Hayes.
I can hear you, Christie.
We can hear each other. That's all that matters.
Yeah, I guess. I think they'll probably straighten it out.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you, Jim. That was a one button I T.
Mayor Hayes and I can hear each other.
Yeah, can we hear? Can you hear us?
No.
You can. Ah, yeah, well. Christie and I can start saying bad things about you then.
Yeah, exactly. All right.
I don't know what. I don't know what my picture is doing.
I saw it when you first joined.
Yeah, I'm looking at the three dots here and see if it says something.
Right. And who else do we?
The little camera shows it's on.
Remind me who the new board member is. It's here. Okay. Okay. Well, it looks like with the two online, we it looks like we have a quorum, right? Do we need to maybe give everybody just a couple more minutes? Okay.
Why my camera is not working? Shows blue.
It's okay with us. It's okay.
You know, I did dress from the waist up, so. Just Brendan Stack on on one of the.
Yes. Yeah, I see that too. We expect. Okay, so Mark will not. Okay.
This is where we always have our meetings. Yeah, over here. For the election commission. How long ago? Five years ago? Six or seven years? Oh, yeah, it was 2012.
I do that. It was like five or six years ago. Now it's 12. It does. It really does.
So we can see it on the handwork of your brethren and sisters. I can hear him. Yeah, they have the they did. They put the little, I guess, pin for lack of a better word, out back in the morning to come outside. And and then that wasn't working so well because people were camping out over the trees. Then eventually they started cutting in the fence and going under there. So now the sheriff is putting up constant wire around the bar. They're adding more security to it and they enclosed those those outside pins with something that you couldn't see through from the outside. But you could hear.
Oh, yeah, it said recording.
Yes. Yeah, but you can because, you know, that's where they can go outside.
Miss Zines and Mayor Hayes did it. I'm just curious. Did it? When you joined, did it say a recording in process in progress?
I thought mine said right now it says recording. Let's say stop video.
It says it's got a recording up in the top left.
Yeah. I do. I do, too. On the Zooms I call when it's recording, when I join, it says recording is in progress, just to let you know.
Yeah, it did have a message. Yes.
Okay, then we're probably good.
It looks like it is.
All right, y'all. Let's give everybody just two more minutes. I'm going to get a little antsy. Start meeting further after 2:45.
I'm gonna try to check check in on another one. I know y'all want to see me, so I'm trying to check in on another. What's wrong with my camera? It shows like it shows it's working, but. You know, I mean, after all, I got dressed up to come up here to this meeting, so.
Make sure that little at the very top of your laptop, make sure that little bar is not turned. It's right up by the camera. There's this one. Yeah, it does. See how I just turned mine off?
Where did you do that?
It's right up next to your camera. There's a little slide bar. I mean, tiny. Can't see it unless you're looking at it.
Well, that's.
It's right above.
My camera is attached.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's blue.
Yeah, you're gonna have to call Hayes tech support for that.
Get me and Geek Squad working again. See if this other camera works.
Just one more minute. Actually, you know, it's 2:45. Our list started. It's 2:45 and we do expect a couple of others to join, but I'd like to go ahead and get started so we know we have enough time to cover agenda items. One thing, just before we start, one thing noticed. I did. I do know that I did try to get in, but it says I was present. Do we? But we need to mark that to where I was not. We, okay. I did try, but and so it's an excused absence. I just want to make sure we were all clear. Okay. Okay, all right. Hello, Mr. Wilson. All right. All right, then let's go ahead and look. We can discuss the the minutes in the three o'clock call. So, all right, so first order of business, we have four items. On old business, we have the web estate slot one, final plat with to death variance request. Okay. And, yes, Christie, you raised you have raised your hand and I saw it.
Yeah, yes, you did. Awesome. I I cannot hear anyone but you really or anyone on the Zoom call. I can hear everyone on the Zoom call, but I just wanted you to know that. Sorry about that. That's just me. Maybe others don't have that problem.
Oh, yeah, the mics are not working. Sorry.
Okay.
So. Yeah, I'll just. Van said he just holler, but we we'll just need to make sure everybody speaks up, I suppose. I'm sorry.
That's all right. And maybe if you might summarize like in a nutshell or something.
Yeah. You bet. So on the first item from old business that they've requested a referral to the next meeting. So on to July the 26th meeting. So on to the second item under old business, I've got Madden State slots one through four preliminary plat right away dedication variance requested.
Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three.
Okay, and
okay.
All right. So, yes, we can. We can hear you, Mr. Mayor Hayes, and we can see you now as well.
Yeah, I'm on a I'm on a backup, so.
Okay, all right. You look. You look dapper, so I'm glad you're able to figure that out. Okay, so on the second item. The final plat, yeah, they're still waiting on the septic approval for the four lots and approval from the Oak Grove Volunteer Fire Department. But we are moving forward. Subject to those. Their today's meeting. Now, this is that is just the right of way dedication variance requested, right? Okay, applicants requesting variance to not dedicate. Five for the right of way required for the master group. Okay. All right, we can cover that in the meeting unless there's any other clarification questions. Yeah, okay. And then, yeah, man, it says that the final plat. Okay, so that's following the variance request. Preliminary plat approval with the various requests. Okay. And so Miss Zines and Mayor Hayes, are y'all able to hear to hear Van at all? I'm just wondering how much I need to repeat.
Barely. I think I heard him. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah. I'm afraid that it's going to slow us down significantly. So Van's gonna move over here.
Yeah.
He's gonna. He's gonna move closer.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Yes, Mrs. Zines.
Oh, my question was on those that he went over. It looked like the second one, the outstanding was the septic perk test and the volunteer fire department letter has not been.
That's right. So it would be approval.
Okay, okay.
That's right. And condition of receiving those. So it would not be official until that's received.
And what about madness states? What's outstanding on that one?
Uh, that's the same. That is.
That's the same.
Uh, yes, that's the item. Number two is the preliminary plat with the variance request and item number three is the final plat.
Okay, and what about four?
Yeah, we're about to get to that one. That's next.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
We've had to move.
Okay, thank you, man.
All right. And you can hear Van now better?
I can. I can.
Awesome.
I don't know if Mayor Hayes can.
Land, say something. Hello. Hello back.
Okay, item number four on old business is property at Lorance, high slots one and two, final flat.
Yes, yes, it's provided necessary notification on this and the staff recommendation is approval subject to variance being approved.
Okay. All right. And Ms. Blick just pointed out that you know, when there's so the first item of business in though businesses is a good example of that since that's being deferred. You guys may not. The board members may not receive another copy of that in the next packet.
The left lane to turn on to state highway 454.
And Miss Zines, you. Yeah. We're picking up your.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Just want to let you know.
We all know where we are. Okay.
So just just a call out that any deferred items like number one in the old business, hold on to that because you'll need it for the July meeting. Okay. All right. Next, first item of new business is the Fernbrook Woods subdivision last one through three final plat.
Yes, this is a couple of final plat. Three lot. Advocate has provided us, if everything you say recommend approvals file with the note that they need to obtain a driveway permit from Road Bridge. Notice they're trying to provide for the advocate. The three lot playoff of Denny Road. So it's after the staff with approval file.
Okay, any questions on new business item number one? Okay, I remember two is the Valley Road subdivision lots one through three final plat.
Yes, this is another three lot final plat. The app has requested the variance of the right of way dedication and has provided the necessary documentation to show that they've provided notice to the staff for approval subject to their variance and the fact that lots two and three may require flood permit and possible no rise depending upon the location of where the owners choose to build their residences.
So in that case, that would be a conditional approval.
If they may not need anything, if they don't build it in that particular location, but we just want to provide notice that if they do, they're going to need a the flood permit and possibly a no ride certificate in order to do so. They just need to be aware of that.
Right. So that would be very similar to like volunteer fire department. I mean, it may be a conditional.
Yeah, well, well.
An additional condition.
It's a notice of a possible condition. If they don't build there, they don't need to do anything. So in the case they do, they'll have to get a permit from us.
Right, okay.
Yeah, it comes. It comes from the flood administrator. No, you wouldn't see it. The only thing that you'd ever see on the flood from a flood permit or anything related to the FEMA flood plane regulations would be if there was a variance requested from ordinance, which we, the county typically does not recommend a free with any barriers because in the flood plain ordinance, if you start to vary it, it starts to draw notice from FEMA and if you do enough variances, they may revoke your fund.
For the whole county?
Yes, yes.
And that is not good.
No, so we don't. We don't jeopardize that. I mean, somebody may have an extraordinary circumstance and you want to be able to hear it. But typically, we've not ever approved any as far as I know. And if we did get one, we would likely recommend denial, but we certainly look at it if they were extenuating circumstances.
Okay. Any other questions on Valley Road subdivision lots one through three? Okay, third item of business under new business is Waterview Estate slides 23A, 23B, final plat.
Yes, this is a is this in the expired? No, that was one. This is just a replat on the common line, I guess, between the two. Yeah, and so it's a two lot plat of a one lot existing and it's a final plat and the staff, there's nothing for the absolute to do. They've met all our requirements. The staff recommended approvals.
The understaffed comments note the side and rear yard setbacks on the
That's been addressed.
Okay. Okay. All right, other business. Going, we have the subdivision ordinance amendment notice provisions.
Yes. This is other business that has come back. Okay, it's like a boomerang business, I guess you would say. This staff has looked at comments made by the administration and by the quorum court and have has tried to adjust proposed amendments to address those things and basically, this is very similar similar to what the board approved a few months ago, but went to the form for primary difference is it's 10 or more lots. I guess that's the same as the 10 or more lots. No, that is there 10 or more, meaning it's a it's a major subdivision, but we've we've added to that the fact that it's 10 or more. So a subdivision of significance. So that way they would have to do notice and like everybody else that asking for variances and so forth.
So, sorry to interrupt, but does that mean that what we're looking at, the blue is new?
Correct.
And the red was existed from the previous proposal. Okay.
So and the notification distance is changed, as you say, from a thousand thirteen hundred foot radius to property owners within 500 feet. For instance, these are adjacent and budding property owners or or property owners within 500 feet, whichever is greater to the subject property. Typically, it's going to be 500 feet.
I'm I was. So that's part of my confusion. It said because within a 1300 foot radius is scratched out, right? So what does whichever is greater mean?
Whatever the greater distance is, it could be more than that, I guess, if the property is bigger.
Well, it's either a budding or within 500 feet. So
but.
Whichever is greater. So you're either abutted to the property or you're within 500 feet and you're not abutted to it. So. Yeah, that makes. Yeah.
But the other adjacent and budding properties would be notified. Yes, all the adjacent budding properties should be notified.
Right.
Up to 500 feet.
Plus any non-adjacent property owners that are within 500 feet. So I still don't understand what whichever is greater means. Because those both apply, right? Just trying to avoid confusion down the road.
A budding is not a distance. So it's not a greater distance than 500 feet, but I don't think it. I don't think the language negates this.
I agree. I'm just trying to avoid confusion. If I'm missing something. But right. And just taking a little step further, I'm just saying it's confusing. I guess it will be less. That's right. There is no whichever is greater.
Yeah, because the budding is within 500 feet.
Right. Okay.
Let's see. Next is changes. Eliminated. Yes, that was before, wasn't it? Of the last change is to eliminate the word eliminate exclusion from the variant section by calling it its own designation because it was never the intention, I don't think, of the planning board or the staff to say that every family exclusion is variance. But so we what we wanted to be is is non and not required to be included in the variance. So we just find exclusion and make sure that all the language in this section is strictly exclusion, not variance. So it's clear that it's not to be included in the notes provision.
Okay, and that's on page six, right?
Yeah, it goes on. There's a whole section for exclusion.
Yeah.
Starts at 1.11. And so anytime there's a word in there that we make sure that it was clear it was exclusion.
Okay, yeah.
So it's shown in there for five times.
Okay, yeah, I would. Did we have some changes on page five we need to talk about? I saw some blue on there.
Taking out the image of the plat and the date of public here.
We've already talked about.
And and radius changed to distance.
The sign size is the same. And yeah, correct, substitute distance is the radius.
On three B, page six, I mean, five, I'm sorry. And then remove C on.
Image of the planet and data public here.
Right. Okay. And then the exclusion. And that's it.
That's the sense. Uh, I think I think what it is, if we can't do this, don't come back. That's the direction I would give.
Okay. Did everybody hear that? That was important. The direction that we've gotten from the quorum court is accept these or or don't come back. So.
I think what's desired is to have a I think what, what's desired is to have a uniformity of direction and agreement in that. So that when whatever we do comes back to the court court, it's unanimously approved by the planning board. And supported by the planning staff. I think that's it.
Ms. Ains, you have your hand raised?
Yes, I was at the court meeting when this was pulled. And I, I don't really agree with what Dan said. I think the, the JP's, and I think they would have gone with thirteen hundred feet and found it, in fact, it was.
You're cutting out Misses, I'm sorry.
With not affecting the little guy. And I think that if we had changed the lot size to consisting of ten or more. That would have satisfied the JP's and I think they would accept the thirteen hundred foot radius. I think the five hundred foot is something that Judge Hyde was wanting. And, and it was pulled. We had had it unanimously approved by the board and the staff. So it was pulled, I think, by Judge Hyde. And the JP's were fully in support of it until Van had mentioned would hurt the little guy. So I think the changes, I, I, I'm okay with personally, except for the five hundred foot. And it's not even a radius anymore. It's a bending. And adjacent and, and five hundred feet. And I still don't know. In that chairman, I know you were, I couldn't hear it very well. And then the other thing that I'm not in favor of is the image of the plat being removed and the date of the public hearing being removed. I don't understand why that was removed, drawn, it was struck. And so the radius and the distance, the image, the date of the public hearing. And those items, I think, I, I wish we could change it back to the way it was. And I think the JP's would accept it.
Okay, so it just occurred to me that we, so those points are, I understand your points, but we need to make those in the, in the regular meeting. Yeah, we're in the agenda meeting and I'm sorry, I kind of let that. So we're, so now that, is there any questions about what we will discuss in the regular meeting? Okay, alright. So my apologies, I, I lost track that we were in the agenda meeting. And so hold those thoughts, okay? And Mr. Stack, I, I saw you made some comments as well. First off, I'd like to, it is. Three oh eight, and we will now begin the Raiders' meeting of the planning board. And but first off, I'd like to welcome our new board member. And Van, could you make the introductions here?
Yes, this is Barbara Shard. She, she used to be the public works director in Placeta County for a number of years. Yeah.
Okay, very good.
God bless you.
Yes, absolutely. Well, welcome.
Terrific lady and a lot of fun to work with.
Good. Maya Hayes said you're a lot of fun to work with. Alright, so let's begin. I believe we have a road call, is Angela, you got it, okay? Alright, so first item of business, and actually, I'd like to also start, we have a lot of people here today. So I'd like to ask real quick, is anybody here to speak on any item? And if so, can you let me know which agenda item that would be and your name? And if so, what's your name is? Okay. Okay, and does he may have an extra pen? Thank you. And what is your name again? Chris Benifonte. I remember seeing you, Chris. I'm sorry, but I'm not gonna be able to remember if I's name. And anybody else would like to speak? Yes, sir. Okay, and your name, sir? Harold Madden, very good. Anybody else? Yes? On the, okay, on the, okay, Rebecca Davis. Yes, sir. Okay, David Lackey, alright. Anybody else? Okay. Okay. And that's Mr. Brown and Ms. Hay, Hell. Owens, okay. Alright. Anybody else? Okay, alright, we'll move forward, thank you. Alright, first order of business is the minutes from the May twenty-fourth meeting. I trust everybody received the minutes, any. Changes or questions? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion on the minutes. Okay, second, alright, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Doin. Make some motion and Mr. Hayes, Major's second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, first item of business under old businesses, the web estate lot one, final plat. And we also have a width to depth variance requested as a part of that.
Yes, so this, this. Plat is not right for aggressing. The app is not. Provide this necessary information, notice information that is asked to be deferred till July the twenty-sixth.
Okay. I entertain a motion that this item be moved to the July twenty-sixth meeting. At first, and Mr. Majors is second. Sorry, thank you. And. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, any opposed? Okay, and board members, be sure to hold on to that for the next meeting. You probably will not receive it in your next packet. Actually, Mr. Mays, Mr. Majors. Um, yes.
So, okay.
Alright. Item number two, Madden Estates, lots one through four, preliminary plat, right of way dedication variance requested.
This is a. Summary plat for Madden Estates and it's for lot, for their plat. African has. Requested. Is requested the variance, provided the necessary information for that right of way dedication variance. There's two outstanding issues on this item, and that is a letter for the volunteer fire department. And the perk test showing that the four lots can perk. Staff recommends approval, subject to the variance being approved. And the African providing the volunteer fire letter and the purpose.
Okay, we have members from the public here, so I'll just, just so you know, what, what I'd like to do. Is make sure that we have a motion for the item before there's discussion. So I don't want anybody to think that we're, that we're moving forward without your opportunity to speak, okay? So as Vance called out, I'll now entertain a motion on the Madden Estates. Lots one through four preliminary plat. And specifically, we need to move forward on the variance request first.
I'm moved to approve the right of way dedication variance for the preliminary plat.
There are a second. Okay, Ms. Blick is a second. Now, any discussion items? I mean, any discussion on the variance request? That's including any members of the public, yes, sir. Okay.
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman.
Yes.
I can't, I don't know that Christie, but I can't hear the speaker.
Alright, so that a member of the public, Mr. Brown, has asked if they're just, if staff would confirm that there's a bill of assurance for the property.
And the answer is yes, there is a bill of assurance. And the other answer is there's no preclusion to any particular use in the bill of assurance.
Uh, Mr. Madden?
We don't have any, we have actually, you said four lots, there, there are two lots there that I don't think anything can be done. That made one person simply as a green. I live across the street. And so there's nothing going in there, I'm sure you, that I would, you know, damage the neighborhood of anyone else, cause I live there too. There's an old county road that was called Dean Drive on the east side of the property, fifty-five. It was closed by the county government in nineteen eighty-two. Oh, it's still there, we have proof of it. And. We have laid a water lot. Twelve hundred feet from the road to that ten acres. And we have a walker. Captain of the army in this family and have a house clean for that fair. So the other lots are, now two, there's one on the road, it's two acres, the neighbor's daughter dog. And the old home, the old war, the old home, that house. So just remember, I'd be glad to give them any insurance, it's like wall, but nothing's gonna happen on that other than. Right now, two tracks have been sowed, one of them's the old home place, and it's occupied. It's always been. Nothing's happened to it yet, nothing will. I mean, it's been sowed, I'll give them whatever they want, for sure. They don't, they don't wanna go, there's no, not gonna be any mobile homes or anything like that, go ahead and, sure, that's so. And we have a protest already.
So, yes, Ms. Blick.
So lot number two, is that the one where the homestead is?
Yes, that's the home place, and there's a road, right there, that's the home place, that must have been there probably close to fifty years.
And so when you're talking about ten acres, that's to the north.
Yes. It's exactly, but, but for your information, we have got a protest, through the way of the plat, we're gonna put seven sisters, within it, that you all see.
And you're saying lot number one is not really suitable for development?
No, it's not suitable for development. We don't want to do any of it, maybe perhaps somebody interested by it, just like I say, as a, as a green building, whatever.
And lot number four is the one that folks are concerned about, the bill of assurance, that something is kind of terrible.
Well, I'm sure we do that. There are no restrictions out there, but, you know, we'd be glad to give them the insurance that they want. Which is across the street, which is well free, that is a. Concern is that, and Mr. Ed, Mr. Matt said, there's no mobile home, certainly, it's not like that. Unfortunately, once the property is sold, without bill of assurance, the person there can do whatever they would like. So we're asking for a bill of assurance to be issued on that property, they will match well free, that's proper for us. I only live right here, all that law, right here, I have acres, and it has no bill of assurance. So well free, I mean, well free ones up to the Rogers Hatch. And stops at that point. This is what we're making that way down in this area. As man is what, this is not well free, but it starts right.
And what's, what's that road going east to west there between?
So.
Well, I'm gonna make sure it clear, what, what has been agreed to. Lot one, you'd say would be a green space with no development?
We have no plans to.
Well, I understand that, but.
Not suitable.
They're, they're asking that you include in the bill of assurance that lot one will not be developed. And the other question that the neighborhood had was on lot, which? Four and.
Four and three.
And so on three and four, what is the neighborhood's concern on three and four? What's gonna be built on it? Whether it's residential, no mobile homes, what is it that you're after?
Correct. I, I can tell you right now, lot three is not suitable either, right now. I got, I'll be getting it developed at all, but I'll give whatever.
That's, that's a pretty broad statement, so I'm just trying to, trying to.
If you could match the bill of insurance to well free, I would be happy.
So, yeah, so that was my next question, Mr. Madden. Are you okay with us deferring to the law meeting and you guys work this out?
If we, if we can, this, I'm trying, so lot one is to be undeveloped, so you can include that in your bill of assurance. It's like no development on lot one. Lots three and four, you, you agree that it's gonna be single-family residential, no mobile homes? Well, then you can put that in your bill of assurance and that'll set up.
Alright, any additional concerns, Mr. Brown or Mrs. Owens? Okay, alright, so do we have the proper notes on that?
Yeah, that's what I was trying, I have them in my head, it just. Yeah, so, so the, our approval is subject to those, the African providing us a bill of assurance. That, that eliminates development on lot one and allows only single-family residential. No manufactured housing on lots three and four.
Okay, so. I just wanna make sure you guys understood what Van just said. Okay, so lot number one, just to recap and keep me honest, and so lot number one, no development.
And the only, the only thing I'd possibly see in the future is if there was a road that went up through to the back. I don't, but I don't have a plan for that, I'm just saying that that's only a could be used for, and so low in the front, it would take a lot of work to do. I don't have, we don't have a plan for it, but no plans to develop a lot.
Okay, but you're okay, just to be clear, you're okay with including that there is no development, okay? Alright, and then lots three and four, you're okay with in the bill of assurance it being a single-family only and no mobile homes?
Right, no problem.
Are we good, everybody? That's, that's up to you, but it sounds like we've met neighbors' requests and we're all good to move forward, alright.
So, Mister Chairman, that is on the, the bill of assurance should be a stipulation on the approval of the plat.
That's right.
And so we have the variance request, the motion to approve the variance request.
It's on the table, that's right, with a second. So any further discussion on the variance request, actually?
Mister Chairman, I just have a question regarding the right of way dedication, a five-foot right of way dedication and ordinance. Mister Madden does not want to require this, curious, is that creating a problem?
It, it, the problem was created by case law in Arkansas, and this is, this is on our advice by our county attorney, addressed this way.
Okay, okay.
The only, the only right of way on there is a utilities with an entry which goes across lot one. And there's an old county road, as I mentioned, on the east side of that, all the way back. And there's an old county road, as I mentioned, on the east side of that, all the way back almost to Helenwood back there. And it's a fifty foot, eight and a half, which we still, we let it, you know, be used, we read off it. It was once a county dedication called Dean Road. But it was closed. I've got the order in my file here, but the county says nineteen eighty-three. Sent back to the original landlords for that play. But it's open right now. We've got to open to serve the, the ten acres in the back, which we have an offer of. And the last contractor to build a house back there, which has not started, and she had a whole work to do with that road fifty foot back. And it was back there about thirteen hundred feet.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, the, the only reason to, uh, not approve the variance would be if the county would have a need to widen that road.
Right.
In the future, which, that's a very short road. I foresee any need to widen it in the future, so we're not losing anything in approved variance request.
Any other, yes, Ms. Majors?
Yes, uh, that order, or exactly all these laws. North class county.
Yes, sir, they're, they're not, there's.
That John Road or James?
No, it's James Road, which, which comes off the plant road, which comes off of three sixty-five. So if James Road runs straight east to west, getting east at Camp Promise property, but it's more home now. There's more, everybody out there has small acreage. Everybody out there's on the set. And, uh, and there's water.
I was trying to find some.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, there's. It backs up, as you mentioned, the twelve creek building back there. Those are all anywhere from my eight and a half.
Send that star up on the, on the, uh, display is a good indication where it's at.
I'd like to make a point, because the ten acres, that's not a part of this platte, been referenced. If, if, if the applicant wants to do something with that, then what they will need to do is put a, uh, a provision in their restriction, in their deed when they sell it, if they wanna, they can't do it.
Because we still own it right now.
Right, right. I was just letting you know that has to be separate from this action.
No problem. I understand it's not, we'll do it anyway. I, I, I want to keep my record happy. I'll let their team get on, so.
Okay, so, um, any further discussion on the variance request? Okay, uh, Mayor Hayes and Ms. Ains, I'm sorry, I can't repeat all that. But we do have an agreement with the neighbors. But we do have an agreement with Mr. Uh, uh, Madden, Madden and the neighbors on the, on updating the bill of assurance. So, uh, all that came about during the discussion on the variance request, which is now on the table. No further discussion unless either of you have any.
I've got to say, I got this letter in the mail that I'm gonna sign after he gives the.
What is?
What?
The notice, it's a notice of the meeting.
Thank you.
You're good, okay, no problem. Okay. Absolutely, I understand. And same he does as well. So there was just further discussion, um, on the neighbors and everything's good. Ms. Ains, did you have? Or Mr. Hayes, Mayor Hayes, did you have any further discussion items on the variance?
I don't think.
All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now.
No. Oh.
Was that a no vote?
I got it. I said no. I just, yeah, I said no.
Okay, so that was, uh, one.
Yeah, mine was no.
Okay, all right, with one dissent, motion carries. Uh, now we're on to the property, to the preliminary platte itself of Madden Estates, lots one through four.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved to approve Madden Estates, lots one through four, preliminary platte, uh, with the stipulation of a bill of assurance. As agreed upon with the neighbors. As we detailed earlier.
In addition to.
Purchase and.
Persest.
Purchase and the volunteer fire department. Approved by the volunteer fire department.
Correct. All right.
This is the preliminary, we haven't got the.
All right, uh, motion on the table, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Blake got you by a couple of sec, by maybe a second.
My second. I, I wanna, I wanna, I, I, a camera review on that.
She said she'd give it to you.
I'll defer to.
Keep it live, keep it live. I love it. Okay, motion and a second, uh, any discussion?
I just wanted to make note that this is not, uh, in order. It doesn't have all of the requirements yet, so I just, I wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
We noted. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Yes.
Can I start ready to be excuse for being running on me?
I'm not aware of any.
I don't think there's any.
We got the same questions on the final, so, yeah.
Yeah. All right, next of our business is Madden Estates, lots one through four, final platte.
Mr. Chairman, I moved, we, uh, approved the right-of-way dedication variance, as, as requested.
So. We've approved that in the preliminary, so do we have to approve it again in the final?
Well, yes, because there's two different, there's a preliminary platte and then.
Okay.
That's the final.
All right, so now it's the final, okay. All right, so same property, but now we're on the final platte as opposed to the preliminary platte. Mr. Wilson has a motion on the table, uh, looking for a second for the variance request. You got it. Winner, winner. All right, uh, any discussion? All in favor of the variance request, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One dissent, motion carries. Okay, now moving on to the Madden Estates, lots one through four, final platte, uh, with the variance request approved, entertaining motion. All right, a second from Mr. Doin. Uh, any discussion?
Uh, Chair, Mr. Chairman, uh, is there anything outstanding on this one?
This is the same as the preliminary platte, so you've got the, um, volunteer fire department, the per test and the bill of assurance.
Sorry, is this the Lawrence Heights?
No, this is Madden Estates, the final platte. So item number.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, Ms. Blake, your, your motion includes those.
Right, the conditions and then that we anticipate getting a modified bill of insurance from the property.
Yep, thanks for clarification, and Mr. Doin seconded that. Sorry for lack of clarity there, Ms. Ains and everybody.
No problem.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries. Next item of business is the property at Lawrence Heights, lots one through, one and two, final platte, and there's a right-of-way dedication variance requested.
That is correct. Um, applicant has provided the necessary notification to meet the ordinance's requirements for, for notice and. The staff has recommended approval of the variance and for the right-of-way and platte itself.
Hey, I don't show anybody here to speak on this. All right, so. First, we need to consider the, the variance request, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm moved to prove the variance request.
Okay, and second by, uh, Cara, yes. All right, any further discussion on the variance request?
Is staff in favor of the variance?
We're pretty much inside of all.
Until we address the justice.
Until you're not.
All right, here, no further discussion, uh, all in favor of the variance request, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries. Now on to the property at Lawrence Height, Lawrence Heights, lots one and two, final platte. So. Uh, there was.
Staff agreement approval. You've already approved the variance.
The variance. Yep. Was there any conditions obtained to draw approval?
No, I think it's good to go.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion on the final platte for property at Lawrence Heights, lots one and two. Second, you're going, and Mr. Wilson, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, was there anything outstanding on this one?
No.
Okay.
I don't say were listed, have been covered.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any further discussion? All in favor of property at Lawrence Heights, lots one through two, yep?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, sir. What's going on? Okay, and, and what was your name, sir?
Larry Warwick.
Larry Warwick? Royal, got it. All right, uh, so for the, uh, members on the, um, on the Zoom, we have a neighbor, Mr. Royal here, who's just coming, he received the letter and he's coming to, to make sure that, that he and his family understand what's going on with the property at Lawrence Heights, lots one and two, the final platte. Van, uh, so, well, your, your property is adjacent or within five hundred feet, Mr. Royal?
Uh, I would be, for you guys, if I can understand this factory. That's north, I am at in north of that property.
Oh, right up there, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so Van, could you clarify for Mr. Royal, exactly what we're approving today? We're moving to two lots, I know that, but there.
We're, uh, the, the dedication is being provided on McDonald.
No.
It's on, on neither. Okay, there's two road right-of-ways, the, the ma, the, the county's master road plan requires a sixty-foot standard on, uh, uh, local roads. And in this case, it would require additional right-of-way to meet that standard on both McDonald and Lawrence Heights. Um, but the county attorney has provided us with a legal opinion that says that. Case law has dictated that we have to buy the right-of-way if we want it, and if we don't want it, that, right now, we're requesting, we're, we're recommending a variance until we get the ordinance changed to eliminate. That requirement.
Mr. Chairman, some more?
Yes.
The, what we're, what we're approving here, the main thing is dividing this one lot into two lots, with that small square and the big square around it.
All right.
And there, and then the variance request on that road that, that they don't have to have more than five feet.
Board, additional road right-of-way. They're not required to do it if the planning board approves the variance, and they did.
Even lot, if that I would say, they say it's sixteen nine hundred. And above sixteen seven, I mean, would that actually put me north of that?
I would think so. No, 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 no worries. We're here for you. Um, but I'm sure that does, because moving away from the center of town, your number would be higher, right? So north, you would be just north of that. Yes, sir. Um, but to your point, Mr. Royal, you're asking in layman's terms what we're actually doing here today.
Yeah.
Um, I assume you're more concerned with what's going on with the lot, but I don't want to assume, but, um, are you more concerned? Let me change it to a question. Are you just wanting to make sure that you understand what's going on with the lots themselves, or is there any concern about the variance request about the road needing to be five, not being required to be five foot wider?
This isn't my first means.
Yes, sir. We're here for you. Absolutely. To you, that's right. So let me take a stab at this and then keep me honest. We are approving them changing that from one lot to two lots. But. That doesn't have any impact on what the owners can and cannot do to either of those lots.
Lane use is subject to their imagination.
So we're not restricting or providing additional allowances for what they do with the property. So in a, in effect, I'm not sure what an impact it would have.
The only impact is we're making two lots out of one. There's a small lot with, I assume there's a house on that lot down there.
Lot two.
The big lot has the house and the smaller lot will be created another building site down near McDonald. Yeah, it's the only thing that's happening.
So see up there, Mr. Royal, the, the.
Little arrow.
The top, there's two arrows and the one at the top, right there where Jim has the cursor, there is a house there. Does that make sense? Do you know what house that is? Yeah, okay, it's looking north. And so what we're saying there, the second arrow below that is pointing to a new box right there. Currently, that box of, that property doesn't exist. It's a part of, of everything that's yellow.
Okay.
But after today, if this is approved, you will now have two neighbors instead of one. And the, the second one will be lot two, that lower arrow where Jim's cursor is right now. There's a smaller lot that's one point one acre. And everything else besides that in yellow is nine point two seven acres. But you'll now have two neighbors instead of one is primarily the change.
What roads are these intersecting at the?
McDonald and Lawrence Heights.
Lawrence Heights, north and south, McDonald's roughly east.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Mr. Royal, I, I wanna give you plenty of time to absorb, because that was a lot. This being your first, I remember my first one, too.
And I didn't quite understand what that's actually.
That, that was what I explained to you earlier, that the applicant is requesting a variance on dedicating additional five feet of their property to Lawrence Height Road and additional five feet of their property to McDonald Road. The can, and the county, uh, is, the county planning staff has recommended approval of the variance, so they don't have to dedicate the five feet.
Okay.
And the board has approved the requirement of not having to dedicate.
So. I think I got it, fair understanding. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Any other questions or concerns? All right, so, eh, now, but if I remember correctly, that did come after we voted, right? Or do we still need to vote on?
You have to vote on the platte itself.
Okay, I was thinking that.
Variants have been approved, no, we need.
Okay, so now, but we do.
A mode.
Remind me who had the first and the second on that?
Dexter and Mark.
And Mr. Wilson, okay, all right, so any further discussion on the, um, property at Lawrence Heights, lots one and two, final platte? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and thank you for your questions, Mr. Royal.
Thank you.
All right, next item of business is on the new business, we have Fernbrook Woods subdivision lots one through three, final platte.
Yes, this is a three lot. Yes, this is a three lot final plat, and the applicant has met all the requirements for us to recommend approvals filed with the notation that they need to make sure that they get a driveway connection from Roden Bridge when they want to construct.
Okay, so staff comments, all those items have been addressed?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion on Fernbrook Woods subdivision lots one through three, final plat.
This is Christie.
Yes. Is that a second?
Yeah, that's a second.
All right, second by, by Miss Ains. All right, any discussion?
That's a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, next item of business is the Valley Road subdivision lots one through three, final plat. But again, we have a rightaway dedication variance requested. And I think the commonality between several items today is the advice from the county attorney.
Correct.
Okay. It's not a coincidence.
I'm going to approve the variance, uh, request.
And Ms. Blick is a second. All right, any discussion on the variance request? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, with one dissent, motion carries. Um, all right, so now with the variance request approved, um, entertain a motion on Valley Road subdivision lots one through three, final plat.
Move to approve the, uh, quiet as presumed.
Here a second. Mr. Majors raises his hand, so we have a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, what is outstanding on Valley Road subdivision?
They need to obtain a driveway permit from Plassey County Road and Bridge for any new driveways off Mel Route Road or Hidden Valley Trail.
I'll amend my motion to include those requirements.
That's subject to those requirements.
Okay.
Mr. Majors, you're okay with the second amendment? Okay. All right, thank you, Miss Ains, keeping us honest. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item of business is Waterview Estates, lots 23A, 23B, final plat.
Yes, the, this is a two lot replat of an existing lot, uh, one lot, and the applicant has met all those staff requirements and permits and staff requirements filed.
Okay, so no, all the items under staff comments on everybody's packet has been addressed. So no further conditions on this one. So I'll entertain a motion on the Waterview Estates, lots 23A and B, final plat. Motion by Ms. Blick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Excuse me, on to other business. Subdivision ordinance amendment notice provisions. So we received faint feedback from the Quorum Court. The, keep me honest, Van, but the, the recommendations from the board to the Quorum Court have been revised and sent back to us for consideration.
Uh, no, that's not correct.
Nope.
Uh, what happened was at the, at the Quorum Court, the item either, neither went forward or backward, and therefore failed. So our charge, if we were going to do anything at all, was to address some changes and provide those to the board for discussion today. And, uh, and then what we would do is if, depending on what the board thinks, we'll put it on for a vote at the, uh, 26th of July meeting.
Okay, so then let me restate that, thank you, Van. So restating it, the items in blue are, are, have been added by staff.
Or changed, correct.
Or changed, that's right, uh, by staff in an effort to, um, if, if the board approves today of, um, moving this forward in the Quorum Court as adjusted.
Yeah, well, we'll, we want to discuss it today, just so that everybody understands what we're trying to do, and then for y'all to vote on it at the July meeting.
Right. Yeah, because any changes? No, that's right, that's right. And thanks, because, um, as we've discussed earlier, we always have to have a reading. And then if there are any, any additions to this, then, then the board may opt to have a second reading after those adjustments have been made. All right, so any clarification or questions before we get into the changes? Okay, so on page four, the first change is the addition of the words consisting of 10 or more lots. So that section 110 notice requirements now reads, "The applicant subdivider shall be required to provide notice for all major subdivision applicants consisting of 10 or more lots." Applications, I'm sorry, I said applicants, that's the reason why it didn't make sense. Or all major subdivision applications consisting of 10 or more lots and all applications that seek a variance from the standards of this ordinance and all applications that seek a variance from the flood hazard ordinance. The requirement shall be as follows, but before I move on, I'll entertain a motion on the inclusion of the verbiage consisting of 10 or more lots.
I move to, uh, accept that verbiage. This is Christie.
Motion by Miss Ains. Oh, um, that's right, we're just reading it. Yeah, so I really don't, it's really just discussion, that's right, that's right. Um, that's right, so Miss Ains, thank you.
I read both my.
Your comments are, yeah, 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 but those are your comments, if that's good. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, I'll move forward, keeping me honest, Mr. Wilson. Um, second change is in section 1 dot 10, 1. "The applicant subdivider shall submit proof that at least 15 days' notice of the Plassey County Planning Board's public hearing has been given to all adjacent and abutting property owners with the removal of within a 1,300-foot radius." So it now read, "Has been given to all adjacent and abutting property owners or property owners within 500 feet, whichever is greater."
No, we took out whichever.
Right. Um, of the property, which is the subject of a major subdivision application, application or a variance request. Um, as Mr. Wilson pointed out, we agreed in the agenda item, I mean, the agenda meeting in, in this discussion, that whichever is greater would be removed. So it would now read, uh, that, uh, notice of the Plassey County Planning Board's public hearing has been given to all adjacent and abutting property owners or property owners within 500 feet of the property, which is subject of a major subdivision application or a variance request. So I'm opening up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Christie. I don't understand what the benefit is of having adjacent and abutting, 500 feet is um, always going to be greater than adjacent and abutting. And I, and I know we took the greater out, but, um, I don't, I don't know, you were having a discussion and I couldn't, I couldn't hear all that in the agenda meeting. Can you explain? Why don't we just, I would really like to have the 1,300 foot back because the 1,300-foot radius, because in the paragraph above, we have, uh, created a, um, a situation where the 10 or more lots will eliminate the little guy, which is what the JPs were mainly concerned about. And they were going to vote for that 1,300-foot radius. When I talked to them at that Quorum Court meeting, myself personally, I talked to each one of them. And so, um.
I, I know one of the members of the Quorum Court who did not, eh, who did not want the 1,300-foot radius.
I know there were some that didn't, but there were, there were going to be at least seven.
Well, that would have voted. The members of the Quorum Court supported that, and I know for certain that one of them does not approve that.
I know that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, was I speaking or, eh, or is Mark speaking?
You can go ahead, go ahead, Miss Ains.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I, I did speak to the Quorum Court members, the JPs, and afterwards as well. And we would have had the vote for 1,300-foot radius if, uh, the little guy was taken care of. And so I repeat what I said, that the, um, 10 or more lots would satisfy the concern of the Quorum Court members according to my discussion, because I'm, I don't, I did not see any other members there, all the commissioners there, although they could have, uh, spoken to them afterwards. But, um, this, this is what I asked for and the community has asked for, and we worked for five months on the 1,300-foot radius, and we were all in agreement. And, uh, until, uh, some thing happened and Judge Hyde asked it to be pulled, uh, to, to slash it down to 500. So, and it's not even a radius. So that's even worse. So I, I just, I'm fighting hard for the community. I think that they would approve. And I have no more comment, thank you.
Okay, so we have, uh, Miss Ains speaking out. Now, you, you actually brought up two things, and one was questioning the inclusion of adjacent and abutting property owners in addition to or property owners within 500 feet. Uh, that was the first item that you brought up. Um, I, I guess I see your point.
I think, I think the staff is satisfied to say we can eliminate adjacent and abutting.
Okay.
Uh, and say that all property owners within 500 feet.
Okay, all right, so that, that, Miss Ains, that addresses the first point that you brought up.
Could, could we make it at 500-foot radius at least?
If if it's within 500 feet.
Wouldn't 500 feet be a radius?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I don't think so, because that assumes that there's a centroid in there, right, that?
Yeah.
So.
Would be greater than.
Miss Ains, yeah, I think property owners within 500 feet is broader, broader or wider than a radius.
That's 500 feet from any point on the property line.
That's right. As opposed to a radius, which in a large subdivision, I would think could be within the subdivision. If, because it assumes one point. Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah, I, I, I understand that. So I just want to make sure it's, um, covering across the street and across alleyways as well. Is that gonna be also included?
If there's a property within 500 feet across the road, it would.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And again, I, I would like the 1,300-foot back in there because I think that that would pass the Quorum Court.
All right, well, first it has to get through the board, so.
Yeah, let, let me make it clear what the staff's position is going to be on this. If, if we can agree to the changes that we're talking about here, the staff is going to support it. And it's hopeful that the administration will support it. If, if we don't, if we can't agree with it, the staff is going to oppose it.
But the JPs have the final word.
We're going to oppose all of it. There won't be any notice change if the Quorum Court unless they approve it. It's got, that's what we're going to do. And, uh, that's what the staff position is, that's administrative position. So I think it's pretty clear. So you just need to take that under advisement.
Right, so the board, just, just same, so just to be clear, the board may choose to do one thing, but if it's 1,300-foot radius and not the 500-foot as requested, then administration and the GP, JP's will hear that staff does not support regardless of what the board has proved.
Yes, and they could override the board and amendment. And they could change it to 1,300 foot.
I love that Quorum Court's going to have the appetite to do.
I would guess not, but if they could do anything they want, because if they can get enough votes, that's a legislative body, so.
Okay.
Whatever they choose.
So.
That the judge can veto something he doesn't like.
Okay.
Chairman.
Mr. Ains, yes.
I, I just heard something that I'm a little curious of. Does that mean that any position that the board takes here now or thereafter that the staff can oppose that?
Supposedly.
Well, it, it, the staff typically is supportive and tries to come to some consensus on what it is we're trying to do, uh, in terms of amendments or anything else. Uh, and I guess, I suppose that the, the board could do whatever they chose. They could do 2,000 feet if they want to. The staff just won't support it.
Was the staff, the staff of the commission or the Quorum Court?
The staff of the, of the planning board.
Well, I'm sorry, if I may clarify, Mr. Hayes, this, the staff of the planning department reports to the county and the county judge. You don't report to, to the planning board.
Correct.
And your, your position or support for the rules or ordinances that we present is, is just a recommendation.
Correct.
And then the Quorum Court can take it or leave it, but they, they don't take your recommendation at their own peril, I suppose. That's, that's an editorial.
Well, I mean, I, I guess, and I just, you know, I was a little curious because, you know, I mean, obviously they take our recommendation for whatever it is, and they can do whatever they want. There's no question about that. But the relationship between the staff and the commission, uh, are you saying is legitimately could be in opposition to each other?
It could be, but it's not, more than likely it won't, but it is possibility. Um, on this particular issue, I think it's almost a guarantee.
Well, I'm not talking about this issue in particular. I'm talking about just issues in general. I mean, I'm, I know when I was at City Hall, you know, I very rarely went against staff. Uh, in fact, I don't know that I, well, I'm sure there was one or two times, but you know, when I did, I usually had a pretty darn good reason. And at least the staff, uh, I, I don't ever recall the staff of Parks Commission or the staff of the Planning Commission or, you know, being in opposition to the commission. Now, you know, things may be different here, and I'm really not talking about this issue at all. I'm just talking about the relationship between the staff and the commission, and I guess that troubles me a little bit.
Well, let, let me give you an example. We had a conditional use permit, the only one we've ever had in our watershed, which was a sounding action. Staff recommended approval as filed, uh, for the conditional use permit, but the planning board recommended to not. So the, the planning board had the right and chose to override the staff and their recommendation.
Well, but I say, I think, Van, you're telling me that that was a recommendation from staff to the planning board. There wasn't a difference in opinion that reached the Quorum Court.
Well, there's nothing at the Quorum Court right now. This, we're at the beginning again.
Again, I'm not talking about this issue. I'm talking about the general relationship between the staff and the planning commission, which, I mean, I, you know, I, I don't have any issues, you know, that I'm specifically referring to. Just talking about, you know, the general relationships of the staff going one direction and the commission going other. I think that's inherently, uh, uh, you know, inherently, uh, presents problems. I don't know, I mean, I, you know, I heard what the, I guess the one that spoke not being there is the, uh, county attorney?
Uh, no, that was Mr. Wilson stating and clarifying, and I suppose, and then you could confirm. But, um, you are staff to the commission, but you're, you answered. But, um, you are staff to the commission, but you're, you answer directly to administration to. Not to the board.
I, I, you know, I, I may just check. I mean, again, I don't have any issue with staff. And this is purely theoretical in terms of, you know, the relationship between, you know, the, uh, you know, the staff and the commission, but. Uh, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm troubled, not, not by the reporting. You know, because I understand, certainly understand that. I just, I'd hate to get the staff and the commission into a do. On different, on different sides of the, the, a, any issue. And, and I'll just, at this point, leave it at that.
Yeah, duly noted, understood.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the question here is five hundred feet or thirteen hundred feet.
Right.
And I, I feel like most of us, I'm, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else, but I'm not gonna vote for thirteen hundred feet. I'm gonna vote for five hundred feet. So we should probably settle that issue before we go anywhere.
But is there any motion to change the five hundred feet?
No, this is just discussion. This is just discussion.
Okay, since there's no motion, then.
No, that's right. It's, that's right. But, but our discussion is, uh, what do we, what do we, uh, how do we feel? About the change from thirteen hundred foot radius to property owners within five hundred feet? Um, because if, uh, if the discussion ends up that we're okay with that change. Then there will be a final reading at the July twen- and a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I suggest we poll the board members.
Yeah, is there any other discussion? Yes, uh, yes, this is, and you are Rebecca Davis. I feel like that, I mean, well, I appreciate.
Just so we can get a vote, I make a motion that, uh, the five hundred feet, uh, that's currently on the table will be, uh, the recommendation. Or confirmation of the recommendation of the committee.
Well, okay, we're, we're not gonna vote on it, but, and you moved. Yeah, we're just, we're just taking a poll, basically, uh, Mr., Mr. Mayor Hayes. Yep, and Miss Centifonte, yes.
Yeah, and I, I have some concerns about it. Five hundred feet is, it's no different than what you have already, pretty much. It's, it's not that much different. And I mean, it's like five hundred feet from my house to my mailbox. It's like, it doesn't make sense. And, uh, you know, thirteen hundred, it's really minimal, especially dealing with. Large properties that are spaced out with various values, which is one to be concerned. I mean, all these other people were not notified because the property next to the park that's being developed. Is the developer's property. So all these people were excluded. And, and that's just, that's not property. Okay, if you were gonna do maybe a thousand feet, okay, that would be better. But five hundred is ridiculous. It just doesn't fit in our community. And the other thing I want to talk about is, um, science.
Well, um, if I may, let's, yeah, let's hold off on that. Let's stay, let's stay with, otherwise I'll lose where we are.
You know, and I appreciate that the, the planning board worked with the community for five months. We all did meetings together. We came up with something that worked. It's not perfect, but it works. This is not work.
Okay.
Really shame that all the work that we did is being trashed.
Okay, so Miss, uh, Centifonte, Centifonte, uh, has spoken against the, uh, she's a property owner out there. Is speaking against the, the change from thirteen hundred feet radius to five hundred feet. As well, uh, did Miss Davis, who's an attorney? Republican nomination for the JP, okay. And you also spoke against, against it. Any other discussion? Okay, so, um, staff has made, alright, so the way it stands right now, let's just read it through, just to be clear. Uh, based on what we've agreed to, remove the whichever is greater. The proposed language is. The applicant subdivision shall submit proof that at least fifteen days' notice of the Plassey County Planning Board's public hearing has been given to all. Adjacent, no, 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 has been given to all property owners within five hundred feet of the property, which is subject. The subject of major subdivision application or a variance request. Did I get that reading right? Okay, alright, so is there any other discussion on this item? We, we aren't here to take a, a final vote, but we do need to go into the next meeting. With some sort of a consensus on where the board stands on. Am I, am I right?
We don't, we don't, uh, this is Mark Wilson. I, we don't need to be unified, but we need to be clear. This is what.
The direction.
We're gonna pass. And, and if, if I may, uh, ask Van, the. If, if we change it from five hundred feet, it's, it's untenable. It's not gonna be approved by the forum court.
Well, I can't speak for the forum court.
Yes, thank you.
What I can do is say that what we sent up there failed the first time. And I know it just failed. It didn't go forward, didn't go backward, it went, it came back to us. So, uh, based on that experience and what I have heard and seen since. We made adjustments to it that, that we think will be acceptable. To the administration and hopefully to the forum court and, um.
A compromise.
Correct.
A compromise. And the compromise included. The clarification of major subdivision consisting of ten or more lots. I don't, I don't know that that was, that's probably not a major sticking point.
No, I mean, that, that's, that's fairly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But four lots was too small, I'm right, which, uh, that's a major subdivision by definition. We have another ordinance provision that's ten or more, and that is the, uh, pedestrian circulation routes.
Right, so, okay, so then the other changes, uh, recommended by staff are. So it's the change from thirteen hundred foot radius to five hundred feet. So there's that one, and then there was the. The next change was the distance, which as we said earlier, I think actually is more prefer, should be more preferable by the community.
Right, and it, it, it matches what we've put in.
Right, um, so then the other changes rec, uh, I'll say compromise. That the staff has come up for us to consider is the removal of image of the plat. And the date of the plump, public hearing. From the signage. Um, and at this point, if you'll bear with me just a second, other than the definition of exclusion. Those are the three pri- primary.
Right.
Points.
Right.
So I think in the spirit of the conversation, if we focus on those three. So we've got three changes and. If I could summarize, it seems to me that staff is proposing these three primary changes. And we need to decide as a board, do we go along with those three? Do we go along with two? Do we need, do we go along with one, or do we say, no, we want to not accept these additional three changes? And resubmit it to the forum court. So just wanted to restate that, if, if, if anybody disagrees, let me know, but otherwise I'd like to focus our conversation on those three points.
Yeah, I agree.
Alright, so is there any other discussion from anybody that hasn't already spoken on the distance? Being changed from thirteen hundred feet to five hundred feet?
I, I just wanna say, uh, this is Patricia Blake. I just wanna say, I, I sort of take exception with. Calling out one item and saying all of our five months of work have been a waste. If you look at the document, it's presenting. Modifications that are right, all of the red line, all of the work that you put into it, a lot of it is still there. So I. I feel that to say that it's a waste is a little bit.
No, I'm not saying.
Disgenuous. I, I, because I, I feel like, I feel like we tightened up a lot of things. I thought things could be done better with notification. I think there was some confusion. I think, so I, I'm. I'm proud of what we've worked on over the past few months, and I'm okay with having to work through some other discrepancies. So I just wanted to put that out there because I feel like, I hate to say, let's just pitch it all because one modification, I just.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, could you please?
Yeah, did you hear Ms. Blake? Miss Ains, were you needing me to clarify what Ms. Blick said?
I did not hear what she said. I could not hear what she said.
Okay, okay, a, a comment was made earlier that, perhaps in passing, but it was still made. That, um, it was, um, it was a concern that, uh, that all of the work that we've done for the last few months. Was in vain or, or whatever, but Ms. Blake just pointed out that there were a lot of other changes that were required. I mean, that we approved, that do still remain. And I think that's the general consensus of the room. Uh, yes.
Kind of.
Okay.
Found on that point that. The notice doesn't work if the distance isn't there. And I think that's the property owner's concern. It is all for naught if we can't notify people that are within the distance. And so I don't live out there. I live in Chicago. I mean, I don't know my neighbor. I can knock on his door from my window. So I don't know what it's like to live out there. So I can't, you know, necessarily relate to your life. But I do know that if you put in language that says you have to notify someone and nobody lives. Within five hundred feet, then it makes no sense. It isn't all for naught. So I think that is the point that they're trying to make. Not as an insult to the work we've done, but just because it doesn't logically make sense. In execution, if there is no way to notify people, if it doesn't, you know, it's not applicable. To her neighborhood and to her community. And I think that is. What we as a board need to be sensitive to, that our homes don't reflect everybody's home. And neighborhood, community. So how do you reach a consensus? When you don't all live in the same neighborhood? So it communities or developments. I mean, that's the point. That's the part that why we're all representative. Of various areas of this county. I don't know. I don't know. I can't tell you how to answer that question that is going to appease the forum court. And meet the logistical needs of the staff because there's, it just has to run. I mean, this, this agency has to continue to run. And we can't do favors for a parent of family and, you know, and then not consider. That family that lives out there. I don't know how it works. Van knows because he's been here forever, but we don't. But, you know, and I'm on my way out, so I mean. But I, I have sensitivity for property owners that are being, you know. Unheard in this situation. So I do think as a board, we have to come up with something. That can address the concerns of five hundred feet is through her front door or back. Then clearly, how many other houses are like that? They're not gonna know. They won't know. So it definitely, like, logistically doesn't make sense. So. If it's thirteen hundred, I mean, what about eight hundred, nine hundred? I don't know. Maybe that might. You know, meet and split the babies somewhere. But that's just my concern.
Thank you.
I, I would add that the signage will provide notice to the neighborhood or people that may not be within five hundred feet. By virtue of them driving down the road and seeing a four-foot sign that provides the, the planning board, the fact that there's an issue there. That there's a planning board, uh, staff phone number and a website that they could look up and see the issue. If they, I mean, I know not everybody has internet, not everybody's, but they can, they have a phone. Pretty much all have phones.
But also, just going back to what you say, you know, even if your mailbox is five hundred feet from your house, we're not measuring that five hundred feet from your house. Location is from your property line. So it's beyond that mailbox. You know, it is at the five hundred feet of the property line that we're looking at, at the middle. And so. Location of your mailbox, I don't know that is relevant. Frankly, it's the.
My mailbox is raised on the road.
We're talking about, that's on your.
Not to interrupt you, I'm sorry. But Mr. Chairman, the.
I understand that. I know we're talking about rural area, I get it.
The change here is five hundred feet more than we had before. So we can talk about abutting or not, but the property, the, the distance. Was not stipulated at all before.
Correct.
Right, so it's only if they're, uh, abutting the property. So it's an improvement. It is a step in the right direction. It is not what everybody wants, what will satisfy everybody, but it is, it is more than we had before. And five hundred, it, it's my understanding that five hundred feet is palatable to get this passed. Because if we do more than five hundred feet, we run the risk of chucking this whole document and not having a land use.
So who would make the determination of the five hundred feet where that stops and begins? Who does that? Like, whose job is it to make that?
It would be our job to make sure that they, that, that they provide the notice. If it's abstract, then they're gonna have to do it if it's. If it's, if we give them the property. Yeah, we'll provide the list.
That's right. And so just to be clear, um, so everybody, so Mayor Hayes and Miss Ains that you heard. Um, uh, the staff will be providing the list of all the property owners. That, um, are within five hundred feet of the perimeter of any subdivision. That's right. So any point along that property border that's within five hundred feet of that point, they will be notified. And it's staff's obligation to have that list for notification.
Okay, tha- thank you. And I, I would like to say that we had thirteen hundred feet and it has been reduced to five hundred feet. Granted, it ha- it was a base of adjacent and abutting, but we had something even better. And, um, in the forum court, I believe we'll vote for that. If, uh, we can help the little guy out. By adding that ten or more lots, uh, provision, I think it will pass. Thank you.
Alright, um, any other discussion on the, on the distance? Okay, I'd like to move on to the second item of this, which is the, uh, signage. Staff has recommended that we, that, let me just read it. The sign shall contain the following information. A, the title, the major subdivision or variance requested. B, contact information, Plassey County Planning and Development. The phone number, which I guess. Okay, so contact information, Plassey County Planning and Development, the phone number and the county website. And in addition, we were requested, we, we had on the recommendation, an image of the plat. And the date of public hearing. So those two, um, are no longer recommended by, or, or are not recommended by staff. Um, so in regards to the image of the plat, is there any discussion?
Well, I, I just asked the reasoning for removing those. What would be some of the objections to that? Well, for one thing, uh, if they amend it, it's gonna be changed. And you gotta go out and try to put one in the slot, physically do it. You know, after the applicant has put it up. And so then it becomes responsibility to the staff to say, has there been a change to it? If there is, then let's get another copy. And goes, or however you do it, and then stick it into the sign physically. Um, and the site, the date too, like the, the, I don't know the way today, it's deferred. So it, they just need to know when it is, and then it's their responsibility. So it, they just need to know when it is and then it's their responsibility, we feel that, or the, you know, the applicant or the people that are interested in it to either attend the meeting or 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 they got a notice of the meeting or they went on the website of the meeting and they they they're interested enough to follow it, then they're interested enough to come back.
Progression of the of that was denied or deferred or whatever it is, they'll come back. And and taking those out eliminates that burden from the staff.
Correct.
To change that notes.
Correct.
And everybody within the distance that would potentially be approved would have already received all that information anyway.
Correct. You leave the notice and explain it to them what was going on.
So I remember this discussion and I know we, I think the intent that was voiced was to expand it beyond those to people that were not within a certain distance. But so, you know, I think the question that we would have before us today is if that sign goes up with the title of the major subdivision or the variance requested and the contact information from the planning and development and the phone number and county website. Is that enough? I have an opinion, but I'll listen to, you know, is, are we, are we are we doing a disservice by providing that information but not providing an image of the plat? And or not providing a date of the public hearing?
No, I have to agree with Ben. Because things do change. And sometimes it's difficult to get it to get stepped out of the top. And if they're interested in have contact information, website information, they can find out whatever they need.
Right. Right. That's my position as well. You you have the phone number and the county website. So as as one board member, I feel like it's it's an improvement.
I agree.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I I did want to know that the plat doesn't change very often. I mean, I mean, in my experience with the board, I I I just don't see why that's an argument that it can change and it's a burden. But I I think it would have been a nice thing to have for the the communities because we provide a service to the communities and that's that's nice to do. But I understand that we may not want to do added extra things and it would just be it would be a great addition to the sign and to also have the date of the public hearing. And it would be like, wow, our county cares about us. They want us to see the image. This is great. And I think it would have been an added extra wonderful thing to have. But if anything, maybe we could put a QR code on the sign and they could just hold their phone up and scan it, get to the website. That would be nice. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Sintifante?
Thank you. Well, one of the things that's good about having a visual like that, it gives you an idea of how that development is gonna fit within that property. And sometimes they might be overdeveloped. You don't know that unless you see a community chart. And I mean, I was really surprised how many houses were going on on the block that, you know, it is surprising. So I think that would be helpful. And also, as Ben said, a lot of people are not computer savvy. So having an image is helpful for them. And then they might call you and find out what's going on. So that's second. And another thing I want to say is I do sincerely appreciate everything that you do and all the work that you've done. I truly appreciate it. And yes, it is much better than what is existing. I want you to appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to add one other thing. It's really, really not pragmatic or practical. Because if it changes, or what about the weather? How are you gonna keep it in a pocket or something inside a stationary sign where it doesn't rain on it or then somebody doesn't tear it off or it doesn't blow off or who knows what? It's just, it's just, it's not practical. It's just not practical.
So the sign. Is it going to, so that's a good point, Ben. What does the sign, what's the material? What is it actually? The sign, not the content.
Right, right. The sign, well, we have signs now and they're like, what do they call that? Corrugated plastic. You know, just like you see, like the city sign. Yeah, similar. So in this case, it's gonna be four, four feet by four feet, which is a pretty good sized sign. And the sign, sign, what was our existing sign was like one, two. Yeah, so it's we've more than doubled it. I mean, I don't know in terms of one size, which it's, I don't figure out how many square inches it is, but I figured it out if you wanna know.
Yeah.
Yes. And so it has all the information it doesn't.
Mr. Chair.
Well, hold on just a second, Ms. Ains, because he was explaining what the material would look like. And so I guess what what I was thinking is, you you mentioned some, like a packet or something. I just assumed that when it was laser printed or whatever that sign was, how that was going to be. The planning and development would be at the top and the phone number and all that. And then, but also just as permanent on that board would be the image and the day of the hearing. So when I saw this, I was thinking, okay, so you, your point was those would be removed so that we wouldn't have to create an all new sign.
Be a standard uniform sign that we could print and provide to the applicant to go put up. Because you couldn't do that on a case by case basis.
Right.
I mean, I've never seen one done.
Well, it would have to be a case by case basis because it has the name of the subdivision and the variance request or the variance requested, right?
Yeah.
So there would be some printing or something. And so I was just.
Well, it's gonna say major subdivisions are variance requested. It's, I mean, generic. Yeah, so we could use it. Correct. That's cool. Yes, because they're not cheap. These are not cheap.
Yeah. Okay, so thank you for that clarification. I was making some assumptions that the title would actually be the name of the subdivision. ABC subdivision or whatever, or the variance requested. But what we're saying is staff is is recommending that we go with a generic sign that they can make up in nu- a certain number every year or whatever. And they will literally say major subdivision or variance requested. And it will provide Plasky County Planning and Development, the phone number and the website. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could they at least put a QR code on there? It's gonna be the same every time. It'll go to the website. And that would be nice to at least print a QR code on that sign.
Well.
If they know how to do that.
It.
It's really easy. You can generate a code. It's free. Do it on the website, on a web, on the webpage. You copy the code and you just paste it on the sign. Very, very super simple.
That that's technology that might change in four years or something.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. No, it will not. It has not changed in many years. I think it's, I'm sorry.
Hold on. He was responding. He was responding. Ms. Ains, hold on just a second, please. He was responding. I think you were done.
Okay. No, I I don't think I was done. But go ahead. Go ahead, Mark. You're in charge.
No, he is not, Ms. Ains. I am.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I am waiting to hear what Mark has to say.
Thank you.
Taking some technology like a QR code to point you to the website doesn't improve on listing the website. I don't think that's necessary. And that complicates something that is already, we're having trouble getting passed. I'm trying to get this, this subdivision ordinance amendment passed in some form. If we're gonna beat it to death, we're not gonna get anything passed by the form court.
Well, I I I think it would have already been passed. But I I wouldn't say respond to that because I've been in IT for over thirty years. And it's a lot harder to type in something on your little tiny phone and you mess up as it is to get your phone app out and your camera and point it to a QR code and boom, the website comes up without any problems whatsoever. And that technology has not changed in over twenty years. So I I don't see why that's a problem. But if it's gonna be a sticking point, then it won't be passed because of a QR code. By all means, don't put that on there. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Doin? I mean, Mr. Dexter. Hey, Doin?
Just wanna put a couple of things in perspective. First of all, a four by four sign, if you would look up each of these squares are two by two. So the four by four sign would be four of these together to make that sign. As far as getting people's attention, I think one of the most important things is to make the information as large and attention grabbing as possible on this standard sign. So what's important to from everybody that that I'm hearing today, what's important, major subdivision.
Yeah.
Variance requested. And then who do you call to get additional information? You call the county. So I I think that's what the residents want to make sure that's done and it grabs people's attention who may not be notified by paper. To try to get the the image of the subdivision on there, that's only gonna reduce the information on the sign. So let's focus on what's gonna grab people's attention so that their voices can be heard at this board. So, you know, I'm a simple guy. I like simple things that work. And this standard sign that staff is proposing with with the proper information on it, as large as possible, with attention grabbing as possible. How about some neon lights, man?
Mr. Doin is right.
Neon. I think that would be the practical approach to address this situation.
Okay, but just as an aside, I've calculated the existing side is four hundred and thirty-two square inches. The proposed side is twenty-three hundred and four square. So that's, that's a fairly significant difference.
Any other board members? Yeah. Yeah. As long as it's not cam- it's not gonna be camouflage, is it? Sorry, I'm just trying to make things lie. Um, all right, y'all. I, my take on the room is the, or the 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 feel from the room is that the changes of the image of the plat, removal of the image of the plat and the image of the, I'm sorry, and removal of the date of the public hearing is acceptable. And that the major subdivision or variance requested in the contact information for the planning, planning and development and their website is of of most importance. In regards to the distance. Personally, I'm feeling that the five hundred is going to be agreeable if we were to take a vote. So, you know, I'm not taking motions, but right at this point, I feel like we're ready to take staff recommendations based on the changes that we've made. And that is that you remove all adjacent and abutting property owners and just say that is given to all property owners within five hundred feet of the property, which is subject of a major subdivision application or variance request.
I plan to do just send that written here. Have it now. Look at that form court. Switch to five hundred and eighty feet, come to find out if what we submitted is valid. And if it's not adequate, then you come back and change what bits that would be.
If if they don't change it themselves. But it's a possibility they'll get make the change. I wouldn't, yes, they would, but it's more.
Um, I, this is just, just me thinking. I I know if I were on the form court, if I were hung up on whichever is greater, like I was at the beginning. I I read a lot of contracts at work and when when verbiage is in there, but it doesn't mean anything, I start worrying that someday it's gonna mean something. That may not be the case in this, but I think that that one in particular, it's actually confusing by including whichever is greater because there is no greater.
Mr. Major, are you, are you recommending the changes we talked about today, taking out the adjacent or?
Basically, what what we have now.
What he just read.
Yeah. Okay, okay. All right, all right. So it's not, okay, okay. All right. Thank you. I misunderstood. Thank you, Mr. Major, Mr. Wilson. Okay, so absent any earlier discussion.
There's only one last change and that's the addition of exclusions.
Right. And just to be clear, what I'm saying is, I feel like it's, in my opinion, it's worth us moving forward as we've discussed, so that in the July meeting, we'll have a reading and it has a good chance of passing this board of a vote, has a good chance of passing. Okay. And so you're right, Van. On page six. The owner shall submit an application for an exclusion to the planning, to Plasky County Planning Board, which includes. Now, why is that blue?
Because we've changed the verbiage in there to eliminate it from a variant section so that they do not have to post notice on every application they have for family excluded. We're trying to exclude it from a notice. It was kind of swept in there and it was pointed out, or we pointed out to the board that that was an issue, we thought. And I don't think that was the intention on the planning board to put the family exclusions into that group. So that's what the whole point of the family exclusion is to try to limit it and make it as simple as possible for families to pass or transfer properties from one member to the next.
So this is. So this is page.
Yep, right. That's what it was intended to do.
Okay, I I may be the only one that's not understanding, but it's but the content of page five, of page six right here. The only change that staff has made that I'm seeing on that page at the, well, at the top is the word an exclusion.
Yeah.
Correct. So that it's not swept into the.
Okay, it's, okay, so. Okay. Okay, I would have liked, like the other, for it to have said exclusion and strike out.
Various.
Okay.
So that you understood.
You understand my confusion because you're, if you're saying that we added that, then it would have read, the owner shall submit an application for to the Plasky County Planning Board. Okay. All right. So if y'all could throw those, throw those back in there, that makes all the sense. Okay. It currently says. Yeah.
There's only one exclusion, and the family exclusion section.
All right. So then, good point. Let's move on to the exclusion section.
One point one.
Yes. Yes, okay.
So we'll, we'll put that language in there so it's clear what it was and what it's proposed to be. So it's not a.
Perfect, perfect. That makes sense. Okay, thank you. All right.
In the August. Yeah, if.
No, no, wait. Hold on now. Don't we have to have a reading in July? And then we vote on it in August? I think this is the reading. We're making change. Okay, so so hold on. I think this is, I I think we can as long as, and we've done that before, as long as we agreed that the changes we were making were not material such that we need a whole new reading so we can all consider it another move. And my take is that I, this was a good reading. And my take is that I, this was a good reading. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I had one comment.
Sure.
On, uh, section one point nine of the subdivision ordinance code, I think we're gonna need to drop the word exclusions from the title because there's a brand new section they created, I think. Section one point eleven, I think is a new section that they pulled out, the staff did, I mean, by they, and calling it exclusion. So I just wanted to make note of that. I'm sure, I'm sure staff saw that, but I just, it was just sort of a typo. I just wanna make sure the section one point nine title removes the word exclusions from it.
Okay. Yeah, we're gonna look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other discussion on the subdivision ordinance amendment, notice provisions? All right, Chairman's Communication. Thank you for everybody sticking around. Good progress today. I appreciate everybody's patience and input. Staff, uh, communications.
Oh, oh, yeah, that. Departing board members.
Why are they pointing to you?
My.
After this meeting?
Yes. And that has the judge determined that I can't be reappointed?
Uh, I think probably not at this time.
It's, I think it's two terms. Yeah. Yeah, I should have made that in Chairman's Communications. Sorry. All right. Any other communications? All right, I make a motion. I mean, I'll entertain a motion that we turn.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, all right. We'll leave you with a second. All right. Thank y'all, everybody. Y'all have a great day.
Bye. Thanks, Eric.
You bet. Thank you.